There it is. Good morning.
Turn my mic on. What kind of great news do you have for us today, Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, boy. Well, it is relatively early in the session, so I don't have a whole lot of news, but there is a bit happening. Right now with the prefile bills and then the bills they dropped on Monday and Tuesday were just under 500 bills so far. So it should be quite the prolific session. It's there's, there's gonna be a lot going on.
I was gonna say that it's not 3,000 yet, so.
Not quite 3,000, but I'll tell you what, we're two days in and they've got something like 40 days or 45 days to drop bills. I can see that we could very possibly hit that 3,000 mark without a problem. So it's gonna be interesting. I sent out a quick report that I sent out. Now, yesterday morning, I believe, the only things that that included were the prefile bills, so we only got to, you know, the first hundred or so of each. House, so I'll, at the end of this week, we'll include all the bills that they're dropping here this week. They are doing some interesting things. Some of the stuff that I would draw your attention to. Number one, I, I've said it before, I'll say it again, there's a lot of new legislators and a lot of new legislative aides. Quite a few of these, the members and the aides have never been to an in-person session, so we're kind of figuring this out as we go here. Hopefully educating, a lot of lobbyists have even retired, so. It's gonna be an interesting start here to, to the session. It's gonna take them a hot minute to get their stuff together, so they know what they're doing. One of the priorities that was identified by both houses, both parties and the governor. Is housing this year. Now that said, the five corners, you know, majority, minority in both houses and the governor. They may not all be on the same page with how they want to address housing, and in fact, they may not actually be in the same book. So we're gonna see how that all shakes out. There is a big push, you know, obviously, there's a big split between. Urban and rural counties, mostly the rural counties don't have nearly the homeless problem that they have in the urban counties. So we're gonna have to navigate that one, just as the session goes along. They made some changes in the committee, so we're kind of trying to figure out exactly. How to navigate the situation. So more to come on that, but just something to watch. One of the other things that's. I going on and that we're seeing pop up in the legislation, it's not necessarily. It's in the bills and it's not necessarily new language. But they're using the language in a really interesting way, and what that is, is kind of in the scope statement of these bills. And specifically with respect to climate change and climate adaptability, but all that, when it comes down to. How they're wording things, for example, they. Word this, the legislature finds that climate change impacts such and such a thing, therefore, we need to make this change. One of the things that that does, or that could do, when we come down to the rulemaking process. They're kind of framing the rulemaking process, if a bill like that were to pass. From the climate change lens. Now, one way or the other, it, that could have an impact on how the agency implements such and such a rule, which. You know, I. Could be interesting, I guess, and there's been some concern voiced about that specific language with respect to climate change. Specifically in the rural counties, timber counties. As you might imagine, coming in and looking at, okay, what is this gonna do to our logging? What is it gonna do to our natural resource management, voluntary stewardship, all that stuff when they. Basically declare that there is a climate emergency. It could lead to other emergency declarations and things that would take some of the local. Control away from your activities. Now, I could be, you know, sky is falling, but I do think it's something we want to watch. There are obviously groups on both sides of that fence and they're trying to figure out, you know, is that a scoping issue? And really, that'd be the only way to address it. By saying this scope is too narrow, you're giving too much direction to the agency. Anyways, it's, I'm kind of wishy-washy on it because I don't really know what's gonna happen, but I wanted to make you aware of it. Outside of that, this year. I put it in the report, of course, the Democrats have a pretty good majority in both houses. So they've selected the committees, they kind of reorganized some of the leadership in the committees again, so it's, it's gonna be interesting to see what they come out with. There's quite a few firearms bills this year. I did list all of the ones that were. Introduced at the time of the report, there's been a couple more. Representative Dent has a couple of good bills out there, you know, wildfire bills, pesticide advocacy bills. One of them that, that has come up here from Representative Berry is the creating the evergreen basic income pilot program. This is another one of those that legislature finds that the economic inequality continues to widen the gap between. The top few earners and the working in low-income families. Sounds like a, a good statement. We will see what they do with this universal basic income. It's basically paying everybody. Out of the state's budget. I don't know how they're gonna come up with the money for that, but we can absolutely talk about that. Some of the stuff that we're seeing. For example, when drought preparedness and water system planning. There are some things coming on that, and I don't know, a lot of these bills haven't even been broken down yet, you know, it's so early, the staff hasn't done their summaries, they, they've been assigned to a committee, but we don't. Have anything more than that. They are trying to put some climate resiliency language into your water system plannings. I don't know how that will impact just yet, as we start looking at permitting. You know, for an ecology permit for a well, or, you know, Class B water systems, I have no idea how that's really gonna impact yet until they start the discussions. And that said, full disclaimer, some of this stuff may not even get a hearing. So, that's kind of the, the breakdown right now. I will be sending out a House and Senate roster for everyone with the legislative aides. Identified, last time I looked on the state website, they were still screwing around with the House roster. They had like 157 members and I said, well, that's gotta have some old ones. So we are kind of waiting to get that list and then I'll share that with everybody, just in case you guys need to contact a legislative aide directly. Other than that, the other thing I would say is, I know when you guys are coming over for the steering committee meetings, because there are so many new. Legislators and legislative aides. Number one, I would definitely recommend spending just a little bit of time or planning to spend a little bit of time walking around up in the, through the office buildings. Meet some of the new aides, just in case. And then let us know who's coming and, you know, I definitely recommend we set you up with a, you know, 15-minute meeting with some of the new leadership. In some of the different committees, it would be important for you guys. So that's what I have for this lovely morning. Do you guys have any questions for me today?
This is Commissioner Christopher, Chairman Christopher. It would be me attending the legislative steering committees and I do plan to be at most of them or all that I can anyway. Do any of my seatmates have any questions? Any questions?
I have no questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Zoller? No questions. Wow, easy day for you, no questions at all. I think we all just sit here worried and hoping that they close session tomorrow and we all know that'll never happen, so.
Yeah, you know, I mean, and it's kind of interesting, we haven't actually encountered any. Closures yet, no testing requirements, you know, none of that, like they said at the steering committee meeting. They are leaving it open to individual offices, whether, you know, you have to do masking or anything like that. So far, we haven't really hit any, any nasty hangups or anything, so. Let's just hope they stay in session for the whole session, because when we can't be face-to-face with them, they do some strange things. There is a lot to be said about lurking around a corner and catching them while they're walking.
And some of them have been there now for two years and have never had to talk to somebody, so it's gonna be new for them too, so.
It certainly will, and, and what they don't know yet, or they're starting to learn is. We lobbyists know the Capitol buildings better than they do, including the tunnels. So we can find you. And you always know when they think they're getting sneaky and going out the back door. You, you know right where they're gonna go, and they're just too new to know that you know, so they figure it out pretty quick though. So it does make a big difference. Well, we are looking forward to seeing you here next week, Commissioner Christopher, and. Let us know, you know, if he wants to set up any meetings with anybody, just, just for the sake of meeting. And we can do that.
Alrighty, it's all new to me up there, so I'm just getting my feet wet, so. I'm sure we'll see how it goes, but. Yeah, it's new development for me up here.
Well, and much like Commissioner McCart said at the steering committee, he was not joking, stay off the grass.
Right.
You find out what feet wet means. In fact, your whole ankle. Alright, well, thank you very much, and as always, call or email anytime, we're available, if we don't answer, we'll get right back to you because we're in a committee or something or a meeting. But yeah, don't hesitate to call and ask any questions or ask for a meeting or anything.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Have a good day.
The first one's always the easiest, because nothing's happened yet. Yes, ma'am, what can we help you with? Oh. Okay. No questions, we're good, yeah? Yeah, no, so I did talk to the auditor and there won't be any bills until the 17th, and then we'll have a bunch. And it is her plan to have us receive the bills by Friday night, worst-case scenario, Monday night. But they will be here in the morning for Tuesday for us to look at, according to her.
Has it ever been two weeks without paying the bill?
First of the year stuff, yeah, because they, there's a transition, they have to wait to get finals in or something. She mentioned it to me and then I got to thinking that last year it was the same way, we went up, went a time frame without them. Anybody else have anything pressing or pending or? Oh, I guess I can tell you about lead steering and we can kind of go through all that kind of fun stuff. So they're gonna send out the weekly hot list, which. What I will end up doing with the weekly hot list is I will email it to Lee. If she's working and then she can email it to all of you guys. And then you guys can print it or do whatever you want with it. I would imagine when we get the full bill report. And if you ever want an updated one, let me know, but it wasn't my plan to print one of these off every week, because there, it's gonna end up being a book. There is online, you can go to the state website and look at all pending bills or bills by drafter or bills by issue. And that's probably the easiest way to go until there is at least a complete bill packet. And then. Yeah, that kind of covers that kind of fun stuff. So there is a Friday Zoom that I had Lee put on the calendar, it's just a legislative update. Friday afternoons. On the opposite week of lead steering, which is for every commissioner, it's a listening-only kind of thing to give you kind of an update on what's going on and whatnot. So you don't have to worry about a quorum because you don't get to say anything. If you have any questions or whatever, bring them up at the meeting or contact. Somebody outside of the meeting to ask questions there, but you're more than welcome to attend those and hear what's going on.
And that would be every other week?
Yeah, it should be on your calendar. I think it's every other week on the opposite weeks of the lead steering.
I know you're just getting started, Dan. Do you, I mean, Dave last year had his priorities. Are you moving forward with the same priorities? I mean, we, we talked, you know, about trying to find a way to fix the. Taxation of large-scale renewable energy projects. I don't, you know, a bill was dropped last year, I don't know if it's going, last year or the year before. We talked about that, we'd had all those meetings. Do you want to talk to us about what your focuses are gonna be on lead steering?
So, what, what kind of was new for me? Is why you are at lead steering, you are not acting on behalf of your county. You were acting on behalf of WASC. So while you were at that meeting, you were on their time and pushing their issues, not your issues. Which I thought was interesting. For that matter, they have four main things that they were working on that they brought up during the county leaders conference. The .09 dollars, extending that behavioral health. Federal transportation fund exchange program. And. Changing how justice operates or funding for jails, essentially, those are the four main issues currently that they're working on. And then as. As the bills go through, you'll see on the, the detail report, they'll have things that are high priority or no priority, so they might adapt other things based off of vote of the lead steering committee, and then that is what they're pushing. So unless, let's just say the taxation of. Issue that you were bringing up, that isn't something that I get to bring up unless I can bring that up at a lead steering meeting and have a consensus of the entire. Steering committee say that's an issue that involves them. And then it becomes a WASC issue and then I get to talk about it during 9:5. Anything that's a county issue, I have to wait until after. Their time. You know, so I go up Thursday night and get a briefing, you might say, at WASC. And then Thursday is legislator day, legislature day. Until noon, and then if I want to go meet with people on our issues, it's gonna need to be in the afternoon.
On Thursday.
On Thursday. And I'll have to set up separate appointments and, and whatnot like that, so. Yes, it can be done, but it's, it's kind of a totally separate issue than the steering committee. Unless you can get the steering committee to sign off that this relates to most counties, not just your county.
Well, I guess if, if, you know, the county's paying for you to go up there for lead sharing, which I think is very important to work all as a team. But we also have our priorities, and if you're going up there and you can get up there early enough and start working, I think that would be, that would be wonderful. Because I know Dave was trying to make these issues part of the ledge package for WASC.
Right, and I, I won't have the connections. That he had in there, but it, it is my hope that as we see some of these issues come up, if we are prepared enough. That I can. During the, the roundtable the night before the Wednesday. Can pass out documents. I'm doing what you did and I hated it. I'm talking to you, so I like, I back to Lori. And then I'm trying to stay close enough to get to the mic.
I'm fine.
I just, it feels weird turning my back on you over there. That I can have a handout with what we're trying to accomplish, that I can explain to them what we're trying to accomplish, to see if they're interested on a counter on a state level. Then that's good. I do think, we were originally at the end of last year, we were talking to Zach about writing something up. With our opinions on that taxation. And I don't believe that ever got done, so I do believe. I, you, you were the one that originally brought the issue to our attention and we, the previous board thought it was a great idea. I don't. I guess I would say at this point, know enough about it to be able to draft a document. But I'm sure Mr. McClure probably does. So whether you want me to maybe talk to Mr. McClure, or whether you want to talk to Mr. McClure about drafting a kind of an explanation. Then I can bring it up there.
So I would say there's, there's a couple pieces to that. Number one is, we have a new assessor. And new assessor may have a different viewpoint on the assessments of these large-scale solar projects and. Whether or not as they depreciate, that should come off the overall assessed value.
Oh, you were talking that. I was thinking you were talking about taxation of like the pump storage or data processing or whatever.
No, no.
To make sure they didn't get tax breaks like they did.
DXIs tax.
For the, like they did for like Amazon warehouses. I thought that's what you were talking about.
No, no.
You were just talking about the taxation and depreciation of solar. I got that.
Solar, wind, all of that, so that was, that's one of them, and then also that might be another, and so.
The other I think we can do, the changing the way the green energy is taxed. I'm more than willing to try, but based off the information I have received. Through lead steering. I wouldn't say it's a dead issue, but the green energy companies found some willing ears last legislative session. To pretty much write it in code that this is the way you will be taxing. To make sure that people like us didn't change it in front of them. There are also, apparently, it's just rumor at this point, the bills haven't dropped, there's more bills gonna showing that are gonna come, dropped by the governor to even. Make FSAC stronger and streamline FSAC even more. And even potentially allow the legislature to get involved in county planning decisions. Yes, so that will be an interesting one. It's only rumor, we'll have to see if it pops, and if it pops and it drops, then I'll. I'm sure Zach will let you know, but I will also let you know.
They did run a bill and pass a bill last year that made FSAC stronger with regards to the permitting, so.
This one's even more as far as, they don't want counties to be able to say no. And change your zoning to be able to say no. So they're gonna try to get in front of that, is the rumor, with two or three different bills. To be able to stop counties from saying no or changing their zoning to say. So it's, again, it's only rumor, none of the bills have dropped, it's hearsay by lobbyists. That are in the know, but we will know more as we, as we go through, and whether they pass or not is a different story, but. When the legislature starts getting involved in local zoning decisions, I think we have a little bit of an overreach of power, but. That's, that's just me, we'll see how it goes.
Will keep us updated on that one. Well, the other, the other thing though is with Zach, you know, you're, you're new up there, Zach's not, and so if you want to get in front of these guys, make sure you use Zach, because that can get you meetings. A month or a week in advance.
Yeah, and that's kind of the kicker, I think I'm gonna have to, because if I am gonna lobby on behalf of us. I'm gonna need to do it on a Thursday afternoon, so I'm gonna need to schedule a hotel that night essentially, so I need to. I guess know when I'm gonna do it, talk to Zach, set up afternoon meetings, and then just plan on being there longer that day and coming back Saturday. Or Friday night, so.
Oh, it's, it's asking a lot of you. It's a, it's a major committee.
It's not, if you know me very well, it's not my cup of tea, but.
Thank you for agreeing.
Somebody has to do it, and so here I am.
So I will be heading up to Olympia on 7th of February for gorgeous nights for the bridge. And so if there's meetings that you need me to attend, I've got Senator King, Mossbrucker, Leas and Barkis on the 8th. But. I'm probably gonna have to leave our meeting a little early to make it up for gorgeous nights. On, on the 7th, but if you need, I can stay, stick around on the 9th. I know you're gonna be at Naco. You're going, right? You're gonna fly over for Naco?
Yeah, I'll be at Naco that week, but there's no lead steering that week, so.
Okay, alright, well, good then. I was gonna say I could step in if you needed to.
There is, there is two lead steerings that I won't be able to attend, and one of them is the following week on the 16th. Because I'll be coming back from Naco essentially the night before. So I won't be able to make that one, and then there was, there's one other one, I want to say it's end of March, there is our new insurance board. Has a. Board of directors meeting in March. Yeah, it's 29th, 30th and 31st, there's a lead steering meeting on the 30th, and I won't be able to make that one either, but those are the only two.
And that's at 8:00 AM?
They meet the night before for a roundtable from 6:00 to 8:00 to discuss what they're doing, and then the Thursday is from 8:00 to 1:00. But again, if you. If you're an alternate or even me, I think. And this is just an interpretation, I, I think if you're a newbie on lead steering, you're used very sparingly. To make sure you, you know the issue, you don't put your tongue in your mouth and, and you can testify effectively and whatnot, so I don't know how much of a. Tool, a first-year lead steering person is gonna be, we'll find out. It was kind of my take that the first year, you're just kind of learning the ropes and they don't really. Set you up with much, you're, you're going with three other people and the three other people are talking. And then on your second year, they use you, so. Some of the people were discussing alternates, if they couldn't attend a meeting, and some counties do have an alternate. If they couldn't go to lead steering, but it sounded like. It's not a. Excuse me, it's not something that's necessarily needed, if you want to do it, fine, but. I don't know that the alternate would have. Much to do either.
Okay.
So.
Keep me updated.
Yeah, if you want to go, by all means, we could set it up and. Send you or Lori, but I don't. Let's play it by ear and see what it turns into.
Deal with Casey.
Choking on a hairball, yep. As soon as I get done choking on my hairball. Before we start with Public Works, we will bring up our HR manager to fill us in on something.
I am requesting to get verbal approval to post for the payroll analyst in the auditor's office. There was a resignation received for the clerical admin two in the elections department. And that person, the payroll analyst, is transferring to that, so that will open up the payroll position, so. We could get verbal to post for that, steps one through three, and we'll get that started.
Same pay grade as before, I'm assuming?
Yes, yep, pay grade 39, non-exempt, steps one through three. Yes, perfect, thank you.
Yes, yes. Thank you, ma'am. Alright, 10 o'clock, we will do Public Works intern director, Jeff Hunter.
Okay, we have a few things on your agenda. Today, I have one thing on your agenda today, and then we have a quick presentation and a few other things. Trying to take care of something real quick, so a little bit, give me a second to get my thoughts together. And I do have some information for you. I just got off the phone with somebody, so. And I have a couple more calls to make, so, but we'll be able to get you something before the end of the day. Okay, on your agenda, we have the notice to contractors for advertising our annual striping plan. We do this every year. Strike the hot roads in the county, the paved roads. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Seth, because he's gonna give you a quick, our timelines and how federal projects work. It's all yours.
Alright, so I give you a handout, so it's more detailed information on your handout than what I'll just go through real quick. But we have some time constraints on all our federal projects that are managed through WashDOT. But we have some time constraints on all our federal projects that are managed through WashDOT. And there are certain, certain steps that can't be done concurrently. You got to finish one step before you can move on to the next. And their timelines keep extending. So I wanted to give you guys an idea of what those look like currently. And they just recently extended these timelines as well. So as we develop a project and it gets grant money, we have to add it to the state transportation improvement plan. That in itself takes five to six weeks. Before we can request any preliminary funding, that has to appear on their list. And then the next step would be, you know, requesting our preliminary funding be set and approval to start our design. That takes anywhere from five to eleven weeks total with all those steps underneath that list. And. Preliminary engineering can then begin or reimbursement starts the date that they make that approval. The next step on the list would be environmental approval. That can take anywhere from two to eight weeks, depending on the project and what's involved with it. If there's right of way that's being purchased as part of the project, even if it doesn't have federal dollars being used for that right of way step, that can take four to eight weeks. Because they do have to review it and certify that it was done correctly according to federal guidelines. And the final step before we go to add is requesting construction funding. That's saying that we're done with all our design. We've got a set of plans. We've got our specs written. They're ready for review and that can take anywhere from five to eleven weeks. So. That being said, our federal projects that we have, the safety projects you keep hearing about and the bridge painter, we are in step six A on this list. So they're reviewing our draft request to set those construction funding so we can get to add. We're on our second week of that on most of these projects, a third week on one of them. Soon as we get those back, that's when you guys get to approve that funding request. And then it goes back to them again and they run it through local programs. It goes to headquarters and goes all the way up to FHWA before we are approved to go to add. At the same time, they'll review our plans and provisions while they're processing that paperwork. So only two of the items on this list can be done concurrently. And that would be during the preliminary engineering phase, we can be working on our, getting our environmental approval. But everything else has to follow those steps or they don't give us reimbursement for the step previous. Wanted to give a quick rundown so everybody can see what we're, we're up against with our reviews through them. That's not our internal reviews. Those are just at the state level. And the crab dollars we get, they have a review process too. It's not as extensive as this, but they do have. Some things they have to go through and check boxes we have to check off before we get approval to go to add.
Except so this is just the federal process. This is not DOE or any permitting or right of way or anything else. So there's a lot of steps to get a project. There's actually takes more time to get the project through design. Than it does to construct the thing. And at the rate we're going, it'll probably cost more to do design than it will do construction eventually. Which is very sad. But anyway, okay. Thanks Seth. We'll move on to maintenance projects on the east side. They, we're right now, we're sanding around Goldendale where needed and we're putting some rock on Sandridge. We've received some complaints, which is typical for this time of the year. The roads are soft and just a heads up, they're not going to get better because I don't think we're going to. Outlook on weather is we're not going to get freezing. We're going to get rain. And our roads out that are used further out are just clay basically. So they won't be, you know, so there'll be some complaints, but we'll, and we can't rock them this time of the year. We'll just do more damage. Right now it's frozen up on Sandridge. So we're able to get there. It's east of town, way east over by Pickleton. So I contacted some of the ranchers that have called, talked to them this morning. Came to an agreement that, look, you know, you guys know as well as we do, we can't get there. Not without doing a lot more damage to the roads and then we'll all be in trouble. So, but we'll try to do what we can.
So that was, sorry. I have received complaints about Finn Ridge, the north part of Harms and Van Hoi. And each one I've kind of told them the same thing. If your feet kind of go to your ankles. I wouldn't want to drive a sixty thousand pound grader or rock truck on it. So. Bear with us. And so I'm assuming that's accurate and until roads dry out, we're not going to get a grader or a dump truck on them.
That is, I'm going to go out and actually get my eyes on it to see, maybe there's something we can do in remote areas. But for the most part, you are correct. We are not going to get there. If it freezes up, then we get a chance. But if it freezes, then we get ice and then we got to sand. And we run the risk anyway of stripping all our trucks down to haul rock and then we get an event.
Right.
So it's a gamble. We typically do not play. So no, you are correct saying what you said. I just want to get my eyes on them and see if it's, you know, I've been out, so I'm going to go out with Bob tomorrow and see what we got. Westside crews are fixing some damaged guardrail brushing and patching holes with cold mix. And they're doing some hand brushing around Trout Lake and Glenwood. We hand brush around the communities. Because while the machine brushing works very well, this is kind of ugly and people don't like the looks of it sometimes. So we hand brush in the areas that are closer to where people live. Upcoming facilities, we've actually have gotten a back, the HVAC fixed for the building. We don't have a cost yet. Well, when we get a cost, we're going to look at different options and we'll bring those forward. That's all for the new facilities building here. Electrical on call opens tomorrow. Tomorrow. We have the lift here coming in tomorrow to, to take the lights off the Christmas tree. And when it's here, we're going to also repair the lights at the east end of the courthouse or the main entrance to the courthouse. There's a couple of lights that aren't functioning quite right. So we'll look at that when we get the light lift here. Let's see. Water line isn't changed. Dallasport Community Center is, will be complete today. So the event that's going to be there, I think tomorrow, it's the bathrooms are open and everything is good to go. It'll be ready for them to paint the outside this spring or summer when they want to do it. Let's. And we're starting this year's projects. And the radio site's the same. Clickitap Mill Site, I reached out to Prazer. And him and I talked and we corresponded with emails. And according to him, he cannot do anything. As far as the asbestos cleanup goes, because it's historical build, it comes from a derelict roof. They need third party. So if it impacted, like if we had like an underground tank that leaked. And we had gotten something from DOE or health or somebody else that had impacted like the waters of the state. Or it dripped over to somebody else's. There has to be a third party impact.
They're looking at more of a brownfield kind of add more. Yeah, that makes sense.
So the, the asbestos, no, he said, if we had something where we even paid out years ago, I don't know of anything.
But I've checked and I haven't heard of anything.
No. So there's really nothing he's going to be able to do to help us.
Worth a try.
Yes, it was. And it's good to know that he would be a resource if something like that did happen. And that's all we have on our list.
Fleet parking signs are up. You can see here and the one in white salmon is going up today.
Is anybody parked in them?
There's one vehicle there.
Other than our fleet cars?
Haven't seen any.
No, they're kind of open.
Okay. One question I have, I got asked this morning. If we had any kind of an updated on timeframe on when the old commissioner's office would be done and when the break room would be done.
I just asked that. We're starting work on that today or this, we're starting those projects now. If I remember correctly, and I want to make sure I bring back the time correctly, but we're waiting for something in February. I can't remember. The cabinets. That's it. Cabinets will be in in February, then the break room will be done. It's, we'd be waiting for it. That's the only thing. I mean, they'll, the rest of it, they can get done pretty quickly. It's just we don't, we can't take delivery of the cabinets.
Are they getting in the break room? Or in the courthouse at all, a bottled water refill station?
They're going to have a filter station in the break room. I mean, it won't be, you could, it'll be like what we had in. In annex four, where there'll be a filter system in the faucet you could fill up there.
Is there, but no drinking fountain in there. It's just going to be a.
Right.
Because there is legislation in the state this year to mandate a bottled water refill station next to every drinking fountain. So that's why I was questioning because I'm assuming there'll be one in the courthouse lobby soon or not, or in the.
Yes, we have it on that. We have it on the, on the non capital list.
Right. So, okay. I just didn't want to double dip since I knew there was going to end up having to be one out in the main area eventually.
Yes. So no, we chose not to because of that. So.
I have nothing further. Do my seatmates have anything further?
I'm good.
No, she's good. He's good. We're all good. Everybody's good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you.
Apparently nothing from HR. He just left the room. That's our given public works less time apparently.
I talked to them about that. He kind of indicated they were going to take more of their time today, but it happened.
Like I say, if it, if it happens, I mean, not that it's bad because, you know, if we got fifteen minutes here or there, we can, you know, have more pending discussions. But. If it becomes habitual, then yeah. So we are waiting for ten thirty for the prosecutor unless he shows up early. Either my seatmates have anything they want to discuss? Anything about anything?
Do you have a formal process on the Clickitap Mill? Are you moving through? Process or just trying to follow up because of that cleanup came up?
As opposed, for what he was speaking to there?
That and furthering that whole piece of property down there. Coordination of what's going to happen.
Yes, that would be a good thing to get on a future agenda is get economic development in here to give us a mill site update on what he's got going on. So if we can reach out to them, whether they want to do that on a Tuesday or a Thursday. Does it matter to me? Works for me. I mean, we're kind of, it's a short day. They can do it this afternoon too. It's fine with me.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And if there's anything like that, that you, hopefully over the next month or so, we have seen and heard from everybody on every issue. To give not only us an update, but you an update. But if there's something that's like that. Just reach out to the clerk and have her contact him and throw it on the agenda.
Because I'd really like to work on that and be part of it. I've kind of been in and out of it over the entire past down there, being neighbors.
Yeah, it's, as I said, I don't want to speak to it because I could speak incorrectly. But. And it's kind of the same, I guess I'd say. When they give you an update, you're going to get ninety-five percent of it. If you want the other five percent, you have to go off the conversation. Okay. Well, since Richard was the one working on it, I think it'd be Richard.
I think in the future too, I'm going to cut down economic development natural resources because they're taking less and less time as well.
Yeah. I mean, if we see the people start going long, then we can add time, but. Yeah, that's fine with me. Nothing to speak to? No fun meetings? Anybody attended in the last week?
I can give an update on the bridge. We applied for multiple grants through the feds. For quite a bit of money, you know, on the order of two hundred million a pop for the mega rule and bridge infrastructure programs. All of those grants were declined because they felt we were not ready with our EIS being completed and design part of along in order to. Allocate that kind of funds.
Hopefully declined for now.
Sort of. Yeah. No, I mean, we've got twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So there's years of those dollars available.
One more quick update I'll do just so I don't forget. I attended the board of adjustment meeting last Monday. Which was Republic's CUP application to lift the airspace. And it did pass the board of adjustments. So.
Good.
All right. Ms. Zoller would like to know what's going on with the mill site.
Ms. Who?
Ms.
Oh, Ms. Zoller. Okay. I'm sorry. I got out of here. So I've, I've, since our update, I've taken some time off, got sick and had some babysitter issues and everything else. But in regards to the mill site, we're going to, so there's been some issues there with the building. We, during this last October, I went to the IACC council. I've been in contact with the Department of the Ecology on what that might look like as far as cleanup with the asbestos. It's at that building. That building's got some damage to it. From their point of view, to be completely honest. If the damage occurred to the building while we had it, so if there's been any sort of degradation of the building. While it's been under county control, then that is our responsibility to clean up. But I don't know what that's going to look like. I don't know how much that's going to cost. And I don't know anything about that. I still need to go over there and take pictures and everything. So the idea was we were going to do it this January. When we were originally planning this in the middle of December. But we were going to do a site visit with all three county commissioners, Jeff Hunter, the PUD, because they've got some water rights that are there. And then we're going to be. Sorry, excuse me. And then just take a walkthrough of that. Some of the ideas that have been proposed. Was that the PUD still has their. Still has their, that pump house that's there with the water rights. And so I don't know where the PUD stands on that, whether or not they want. An easement or, or anything like that in regards to that pump house that's out there. But that's when we're going to go out there, kind of see what's, see what's actually on the ground. I haven't been out there and I've been to the Clickitap community several times, but as far as doing a walkthrough of the site, I haven't done that since twenty eighteen. If that makes sense. So the progress for the Clickitap Mill Site was this last, this last March. We did, or this last March slash April timeframe, we did the, the Clickitap Community Council meeting and the, the open meeting for the, for the public with Commissioner Dave Sauter. From there, I have created an RFP slash RFQ that we could go out with. That would be pending review from Director Dave McClure. But really we've, we've sidelined that due to that building. And I've been in, like I said, I've been in contact with ecology. So anybody that knows dealing with the Department of Ecology from Washington State, that, that can be a little time consuming. So, but what is promising is speaking with, with ecology. They're, they're more than willing to help us out. And, and work with us in this regard. And so once I'm done with that, with the walkthrough with everybody and we figure out a good path forward. I can reach back out to them, see what needs to be done and everything else. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that.
And Richard mentioned IACC, that's Interagency Coordinating Committee. The various funding state agencies, state and federal that provide grants and low interest loans. They get together and coordinate. You've got a, a potential project that's, you know, who can take a piece of this, maybe provide some funding. So they meet once a year and Richard attends those meetings. In addition, my understanding is that the. Regional Fishery Enhancement Group, which is working on looking at that Snyder Creek and seeing what can be done down there. They want to get together, their consultants done some hydrological work there. So that meeting's not been scheduled yet. And with Whitney going, I've got a little bit of catching up on, on the status of that project to do yet.
So to clarify for me, has anybody done asbestos? So to clarify for me, has anybody done an asbestos evaluation for how much, how big? You haven't even looked at that.
We, we have not looked at that. I'd like to take a, I was, I was told to get some pictures of the building. Um, and that was something that Commissioner Jake Anderson was, was telling me about was that there, you know. Some, possibly some issues out there. So my, you know, step one, do the, do the big walkthrough. You know, do some spitballing while we do the walkthrough, figure out a, a good path forward and then I can start reaching out to ecology or. Whoever I need to, to start figuring this out. Uh, um, as I mentioned before, one of the, one of the things on it was us partitioning off. The, the pump house portion with an easement for the PUD. Now do the commissioners of the PUD want that? Does, does uh. What does that entail if we were to go down that route? Um, that's all stuff that's. Been, been some ideas, but, but I need to whittle away at those. And so before, like if I were to go for an RFP. I would first need to sort out what's going on with those water rights and everything else that's on that site.
The pump house is on county property?
I believe so, yes. And it, and right now it's its own little area, if that makes sense. And so the, the last bit is. And it's, and it's a very sticky widget is the water rights that are on that property. And you know, and it, I believe you were there when, when uh, the general manager of the PUD did his. Speech to the Clicktac Community Council in regards to those water rights and, and what that entails. I believe it's 800 acre feet of water. They have on that site. And so that's, it's uh, when we first started talking about this, just going out for an RFP or RFQ and doing some sort of. Uh, you know, trying to move forward with the path, whether that was a private partner, public, private partnership, or whether that was just getting rid of the property. We were not aware of the water rights that were on the property at that time. Uh, and so that, that, that puts a bit of a wrench into our. How, basically how we proceed. And so, and, and I know that this might be a discussion for uh, the PUD commissioners, but they. Um, they, they had mentioned at the Clicktac Community Council meeting, uh, some ways forward on trying to. Keep those, that 800 acre feet of water.
Where is the pump house in relation to everything else here?
On the right. So it's up in the, the end of the property there. By the road, kind of in the bushes there. Think right there.
Speaking, would there be, I mean, in, in terms of.
Thinking outside the box with the water right, is there a way that we could? Uh, just subdivide that property and then the part that has the well on it. Gift to the PUD and then we could do with what we want on the rest of it essentially, but uh, just as an update for Ms. Zoller, I think the last update we got. Was um. The metal building, somebody had decided they wanted to steal all the bolts, moving the roof up. So it's not the safest thing in the world.
So that, and, and that's a discussion for the PUD commissioners, whether or not they even want it back. I'm, I've, I've got no idea. There's been some comments like that, but it's uh. The, the, the horse trading in that regard, that would have to, from my understanding, would have to go through the planning department and everything and go through that entire process. Um, some things to be, to think about in regards to those water rights is right now, the entire, and I'm going to speak in very general terms right now. The, I believe they've got about 10 water connections left for the entire community and they use basically one extra. They, they. There's one water connection that's used probably every year or two, but if they get more than 10 people that want to move into the community, they're going to be basically maxed out on the water system. Um, and then they've been talking about using the water system and having it mimic the Goldendale water system where during periods of high flow. That they draw from groundwater and then during normal periods of flow that they would just draw from surface water for the water system to, to service the community of Clickatap. So there, there's been discussions like that, but the really, the, the big issue is that 800 acre feet because it's. You know, the market rate per acre foot of water, I think is about $2,000 to $4,000. So that's a pretty substantial amount of water. And, and there's some issues in regards to basically how we deal with that, but that's. You know, that, that might be a, for a discussion for another time, but tho- those were all topics that were brought up during the Clicktac Community Council meeting with the Clicktac PUD. And that, that occurred this last, I want to say it's last July or August.
Are they pumping from that well and is it connected into the system?
I'm, I'm uncertain at this time, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
So in.
Yeah, I think this is it. See the water tunnel? Got it. So technically is it on our property or is it in the right of way for the rails trails?
In Clickatap, of course, you know, as government things languish and people's frustration of how long it takes to get anything done. Would it be okay with both of you as I kind of field this project since that's my hometown and uh, community council and. Could I pick this one up and? Bring you back information, kind of field it out, see where we can go and get all the answers to some of these questions and bring them back to you. So. Maybe the interest of being able to move on, we could move through some things if I do some investigating on my own. Work on it as a project.
See, this is that whole thing because you can't see somebody. See, that's why everybody gave me a hard time about sitting back.
And if I'm talking too low, tell me because I do, I talk low. It's my voice tone.
Um, I think. A year ago, um, Public Works looked into the cost of removing the building and it was well over $300,000. It might be closer to five hundred. Yeah, I hate to spitball it, but it was, it was a significant amount of money. Uh, when we were first looking at it, and this is back, you know, 2020 before I took office, we were looking at, uh, and then when I did in 2021, we were talking about. An RFP and that is over this area down here.
Okay.
And we were going to leave that out up there because of the, the fuel tank issue and, because there's a couple of small areas. And so we were just going to leave that. Completely out of it, deal with that in the future because the, the lady who owns this parcel.
Yeah.
Here was talking about they might have something they'd want to do with that area. And so with the, the split of where the creek comes through there. It wouldn't make sense to do something here and then on that side because they're two different separate entrances. And so that's where we were looking, but if you want to take it on, um, I've got plenty of projects I'm working on. So I'd be happy to have you.
That one and I'll bring back the information to you guys and then we'll make plans for what we can do this positive.
Right. I think the kicker in that is um. As with anything that we want to move forward on, there's time constraints because let's say Mr. Foster. He's got 10 different projects.
Right.
So where does this fit in his list of projects? And if we. Uh, start really pushing on project number eight, that means project number three doesn't get done. And that's where, to me, I, I'm not saying. Yes, and I'm not saying no yet. I'm saying I would like the board to have time. Uh, take a month or so, go through some workshops, figure out what. What itinerary are we going to put on economic development? What are those 10 items? How we want to arrange those 10 items in order of priority? And then my answer would be yes, but I, I guess I'm afraid that.
Right, and I'm, I'm not.
Move it to number one on the list and we might be missing something else if we put too much pressure on number five.
I was offering to expend my time now before you get to projects, just to make it something workable with all the moving pieces. So we knew all the answers. And then you could develop a project. Right now we keep kicking it around because there are so many problems that we don't have answers to. We can't even think about a project.
This is, yeah.
So I would give you a baseline to start from.
Um, yeah. So again, no, I'm fine with it.
Perfect.
All right. Um, we have 10:30. We have the prosecutor for an update.
Let's go ahead and executive on our litigation.
Okay.
Exemption.
So with that, the prosecutor does not have anything for open session. So we will be going into executive session, executive session. In accordance with RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110, print one, print I to discuss uh, threatening or pending litigation. For how long, sir? For 29 minutes, he says. Okay, 11 o'clock.
You also want to mention that after that would be late for lunch, so there will be some.
We're going to go in, we're going to go out at 11 and do executive again on a contract negotiation for uh, 30 to 60 minutes. And then if we need to back into executive for litigation.
All right. So we will, we're not going to have any more open session before lunch, but lots of executive, it sounds like.